Calls the September 4th, 2018 Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $604,993.97. Manual checks in the amount of $26,425.46. Payroll and liabilities for 8/17/18 in the amount of $230,441.87. For a total of $861,861.30.
I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions of Mia. Page one of the report has a payment to Tom Axtelm for a curb and gutter. I was wondering if you could give me some detail on that.
Yes, Your Honor. It is a citizen's responsibility to replace their sidewalk, and it is the city's responsibility to replace the curb and gutter. So that being said, when we have a citizen put forth requests to or when they go through the initiative to repair their sidewalk or replace it, it only makes sense that we take care of curb and gutter that's in disrepair. This particular individual replaced 76 feet of sidewalk and 41 feet of curb and gutter. However, he has only requested reimbursement for 10 feet of curb and gutter. He provided a very detailed quote and estimate on the expenses that were involved in the replacement, and the city has budgeted $9,500 in our concrete replacement budget line item for such expenses.
Great, okay. And a second thing, page 11, Western State's fire protection for a sprinkler conversion. Curious if you could tell us a little bit about where that was and what's up with that.
Sure, of course. This is the replacement of the sprinkler system here at City Hall. It was a conversion from an existing dry system to a wet system, and it is expected that this system will prolong the life of our emergency sprinkler system for many years to come.
Great, okay. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Anything else on these? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is use of beautification funds discussion, which as I understand it will be led by Ms. Harris.
Thank you. To give you a little bit of background information, each year the city receives some money from the Wyoming Community Gas Foundation to be used to benefit a project within every community. The contribution from last fiscal year was for $10,888. Those monies are actually received based on the amount of membership or the amount of people, citizens, within the city limits that participate with Wyoming Community Gas. At the time, the funds were placed in the Mayor and Council Beautification Line Item Budget, and the $11,000 budget is available for use this fiscal year. At the meeting of the City Council on June 29th, Mr. Kent Cook provided an update on the construction and upgrade to the Veterans Park, and that's located west of City Hall. At the close of his presentation, he advised the council that they would be seeking funding for costs associated to hire a professional artist to design and paint a mural on the west side of the building. The cost associated with the mural was $20,000. Mr. Cook did request some funding assistance from the council, and Mayor Baker indicated that there was money in the budget, and he was confident the city would be able to help with funding in some way. However, at the time, there was no commitment to the dollar amount that the council would commit, nor was there formal action taken by the council. At this point, the project was still in its early stages, and the funding was secured. And if the funding was secured, the earliest the artist would be available would be after May of this year, so basically, we held the funds for almost a year. Recently, the city staff and members of the Riverton, Wyoming Splash Pad Group were notified by the general contractor of the project that the cost estimates for the project would exceed the amount of funding that has been raised by the group, and city staff was able to work with the contractor to bring the cost down, $20,000. And then this left a budgetary shortfall of $24,344 to complete the project. The committee has done a fantastic job in raising an additional $13,500 in just two weeks. There's still a small sponsorship of which we are awaiting a commitment, and additionally, they have set up a GoFundMe account in an attempt to attract other donations. However, as of today's date, there's still a shortfall of $10,844. The Splash Pad Committee has secured a number of grants on this project, which are a little bit in jeopardy of expiring if we don't get some construction moving along on this project. Last week, I did contact Mr. Cook and spoke with him about the progress of his project. He said that that has been put on hold for the moment. They had some other projects that took precedence over that, and they don't anticipate moving forward with that project at all this fiscal year. He was happy and appreciative that we reached out to the organization, and also reported that they would be happy to see the funds used towards another project, and they would come back to the council after they were further ahead in their planning for their mural. And keep in mind, this money is something that we do receive every year, so if we happen to decide to commit this money, we would be seeing something similar coming through next year. So at this time, the members of the Splash Pad Committee is requesting, and the city staff is actually recommending that the Finance Committee consider making a recommendation to the council to designate all or a portion of the beautification funds in the line item to go towards the Splash Pad project. And I would stand for any questions that you have.
When will be the next time that we get the funds from the Wyoming Community Gas Foundation?
The distributions come in the spring, and then at that point, we would know exactly how much we're going to receive, and we would write that into our next year's budget.
And we had, I know that there was, what was the timeline for needing to get the...
To get these funds? It's here shortly.
Was it the end of October or something?
I believe it's close to the end of this month, I believe. I'd have to...
We actually are required to submit a progress report to one of the grant funding agencies. They are going to be covering some of the design and engineering costs, and so we need to get that paid for and expended in a very short period of time. October is our deadline to get that information out to them.
So what you're needing from us, a recommendation to take to the full council for action on an acceptable amount for the council?
Yes, and actually, we were just asking that you would make the recommendation to ask the council to commit a certain amount or the full amount of the beautification line item for the project. And we brought this to you prior to bringing it to the council because when the presentation was made by Mr. Cook last year, there was actually no formal council action taken, and so we feel, as you being the financial arm of the council, that we run this through you first.
And then, give me again, please, the amount for the beautification funds?
So right now, we received last year $10,888, and there's a shortfall of $10,844 for the Splash Pad, and then the total budgetary allowance for the beautification line item is $11,000.
I would mention, you know, she already said it once, but in the past week, we've, the Splash Pad Committee has gained $12,500 from working with community members, so...
Mainly businesses, I mean, that have been willing to step up and put sizable amount of money towards this.
Right. Even businesses that have previously donated have agreed to donate more, so...
I did speak with one potential donor today, and they will be getting back with me tomorrow. They said they were going to be able to help the Splash Pad Committee, but they didn't have a dollar amount today, so...
Well, if we're going to talk about this, I guess we would need a motion for it. Anybody have any thoughts on that? On an amount, or interested in this from the Finance Committee perspective, or...
Your Honor, I would, I would make a motion that we propose to the full council the allocation of $10,000 for the Splash Pad out of this fund.
I would second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? So we're talking about $10,000 specifically from the City Beautification Fund that you're proposing would be going towards the splash, towards the building and the planning and everything for the Splash Pad. Any other discussion on that? Anything else? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I will bring that up with our other recommendations during the regular meeting. Any other business?
None from me, Your Honor.
Okay.
No, Your Honor.
All right, then we adjourned at 6:55 PM.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dearest Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we have. Thank you for the ability we have to live here in this wonderful city of Riverton. Thank you for all the people that serve the city and do the best that they can to provide the services we can to the community. Please bless us in all that we do. Please bless this body that we will make the decisions that are best for the city of Riverton, and we ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilman Lance Cote.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. I'd entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Peterson from the meeting this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. I declare that we do have quorum. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as it's been presented.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion on that? Additions or deletions? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and that passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves. If you've got something to say to us?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I work for Mr. Bailey. I've been here 13 years, and I don't feel safe in the town.
Your name, please?
Beverly Frank.
Okay.
You pull the mic over. This is all being televised.
In front of you.
Oh. Yeah, I haven't done anything like this, so...
Okay, that's all right. We understand, and we'll give you all the slack you need.
Yeah, good. Like I said, I don't feel safe in the city of Riverton anymore. There's too much crime. There's a lot of crime. I pulled this off of the internet, and it shows that we're higher. I'm safer living in Chicago or New York. That's a crime. And I want to know what you guys are going to do.
Okay.
So you have the floor now.
I have the, I have, I have the floor now.
Yeah, you guys...
Okay, well, all right, so it's my understanding that the way that those crime statistics are collected, okay, is what helps to skew the data not in our favor. Okay, and so that looks like it's all violent crime, okay? So we would think about homicide, armed robbery, rape, murder, that type of thing, okay?
Okay.
All right. With that crime reporting system, it also includes shoplifting at Walmart. So the theft of a tube of lipstick at Walmart counts the same on that report as homicide.
Well, see, I really don't care about that.
Okay.
What I feel, care about is it isn't safe. Look at your town. Look at Main Street. You don't have that much, everybody, there's hardly anything on Main Street. You guys want us to shop local. There's really, Walmart isn't local, that's national. So, and then at Walmart, now they're setting up little places that you pay before you even get to the front, because there's so much going on. There's theft.
Mm-hmm.
Safely's gone. Kmart left. Maverick closed because they couldn't stop the crime. I want to know what you're going to do about the crime. There's crime.
Yes...
Look at your town.
Oh, yes, there is.
Yeah, and that's what I want to know. What are you going to do?
Okay, well, we try really hard to hire really good police officers.
Okay.
Okay? And we're, again, in the process of doing that. I think we're down four, we're short four officers right now. Okay? So that means our guys that are working are working overtime in order to try to close that gap. We have an agreement with the Sheriff's Office Chief, is that a done deal?
Your Honor, we're still working on that.
Still working on that, but we do have an agreement with the Sheriff's Office so that on days when we become shorthanded or overwhelmed by that, we'll be able to pull a deputy into town to work for the city, to try to give us better coverage, and so we're trying to accomplish that. And so that's in the process right now. We have, where do we stand on recruiting officers, Chief?
Your Honor, we have four in background right now.
Okay, so they've gone through most of their testing...
Yes, sir.
...at that point, and so we've still got four guys left. Okay? Interestingly enough, several months ago, I think we went through well over 20 candidates and didn't get a single one that could pass a background test.
So what we going to do?
So, so the challenge is, is for us, is to continue as hard as we can to hire enough police officers to try to deal with some of those issues. But at the same time, I want to, I'm trying, what I'm trying to suggest is that, is that those national crime statistics don't reflect, so if you drill down into that and compare homicide to Chicago, we don't have that. If you compare...
I'm still looking at the town. I don't care about that anymore.
Oh, okay.
I'm looking at your town. It wasn't like this. It's just, it's, in the last, when I moved back 13 years ago, it wasn't like this. And it's just progressive, got worse and worse and worse. You've got drunken people.
Yes.
You've got people, you know, my neighbors go, well, we can't go to the park. It's dangerous. And they tell me, you know, and, and like I told Mr. Bailey, I don't know if I told you, I don't care, you're only not fighting the crime, you're fighting your citizens. They don't call him, because they go, they won't do anything. You guys need to know that. You need to know your citizens don't think you're going to do anything. So why bother coming here and saying anything? Because when I told them I was coming, they were not going to do anything. So I want you to know that.
Yeah.
So that you can do something about that. I want him to know that, you know, when a gunfire is shot in your city, no one called him. I did. Why? Well, they wouldn't do anything. Well, that's not right. That's, that's, the citizens are working against you now. Now you've got crime, and now you've got citizens that don't want to come in, because they're scared of consequences. They're thinking that whoever they report is going to get to them, find out that they reported them, and they're going to have to pay the consequences. That's the problem you guys are having.
Thank you for coming.
Am I dismissed?
Well, we...
Did I do something wrong?
No, no, but...
I want you to know...
Okay, if that's, if that's your perception...
No, that is the...
Your Honor?
It's my perception also. I'm Tina Gerard.
Okay, come up.
Your Honor, may I say something real quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
I did speak with Beverly on the phone the other day for probably 15 or 20 minutes, talked to her about the Solutions Committee.
Mm-hmm.
Talked to her about several things that we have going on, so...
Okay.
I have addressed a lot of these issues.
Okay.
But I want to, you know, addressing them, and I want to know what you're going to do. I still don't feel safe. Go out at 7 o'clock at night to walk my dogs, which that's, basically that's what I do. I work for Mr. Bailey. I go to the grocery store and I go home and I walk my dogs, and I get stalked. You know, I don't feel safe. I'm wearing this thing, I got a, you know, alarm so that if I do get attacked, somebody might hear it. It's just a lot of, it's uncomfortable. You know, I helped a lady in the park at the library, well, not the park, the greens around the library.
Mm-hmm.
I'm walking back, and I see a lady down, and I thought, oh, maybe it's a senior. Thought, yo, you're all right. She goes, help me. It was a drunken Indian lady.
Yes.
And I, so I tried to pull her up, and, you know, so I pull her up, I get her over to Smith's, and I went into Smith's to get somebody to call for help, and there was a policeman there, thank God, and I asked him, I says, can, he knew her.
Sure.
Hey, you know these women, or you know these people who are being picked up for being drunk? You know my name.
Of course, of course.
And he asked her, do you want me to drive you home? No, I want you to drive me to the police station, because it's against the law to be drunk in public like that. She was out two days later. Same noise, drunk.
Well, okay, and so, well, we, we work with this every day, trying to figure out some way to deal with this, okay? So we take that person to court, and they get fined $50, and then they don't pay it.
And keep them until they pay it?
No, you can't.
They can work it off?
You can't.
So...
So we have...
This is against the law, so they'll just let it go?
Well, okay, so the only thing we've got is the opportunity to arrest and hold somebody as long as they're intoxicated and they can't deal with themselves, but as soon as they are ready to blow zeros, you know, they've, they've burned it off, they're back on the street.
So to revolve indoors?
Oh, of course.
And we're not safe. Because, you know, you don't know what they're going to do. They could hurt somebody. They could be driving. I'm just telling you, it's not safe.
I understand what you're saying. I do.
I'm glad, I'm glad.
Okay.
That's why I wanted to come here and let you know how the citizens feel. No, that's not my opinion.
Okay.
That's what I'm being told when they go, well, I'm going to call the police. They're not going to do anything.
There's not a...
I've seen patrolmen up, yeah, I've seen in my area.
Right.
She lives on a street that looks like hobo's, it looks like a junkyard half the time. There's no place to park, so when they want to park, they'll park in the street. I think it needs to be patrolled.
Where's that at?
I live on Jackson, East Jackson.
So, you know...
And I shouldn't have to be scared. I watch my neighbor's dogs when she's out of town. I carry the same little horn that she carries, along with a bottle of mace. I shouldn't be scared to walk from my front door to the neighbor's front door to let her dog out at night and get back in time, because they were sleeping across, there's abandoned buildings and homes boarded up across the street from me. They were sleeping in, outside in sleeping bags. And no, I wouldn't call the police, because they knew I was out there, and they would know that I was the one out there, and then I'd call the police on them. So all we're asking for is maybe patrol my area too, because just because I don't live up there, we, that live down here deserve it too, because I'm just as scared as anybody. I mean, I lock my doors, check them two, three times a night, just to be sure they're locked. So all we're asking for is back us up, give us those patrols, and more patrols. Had a guy, his, up the street, his car was stolen in broad daylight, and come to find out it was a friend who took it, but I only saw one, I work from home, so I'm home all day. One patrol went through one time. I mean, we're just asking for, what are you going to do to protect us? Because I don't want to have to carry mace or anything else just to go let a dog out next door. I didn't have to feel that, didn't used to feel that way here.
Yes.
So that's, that's all we're trying to say. And no, I, I don't want to call, because maybe it's all in my head, but if they find out, it's a public record. If I said, called and said, hey, this is Tina Gerard, this is what's going on, they can look at a public record, and, oh, okay, we know who she is.
So would we call? Why do we give you our name? So they can see our name right there? That, that doesn't make sense to me. It's not logical. It's, you know, we're reporting something, we should just be able to report and not have them find out who reported it.
Your Honor, the fact that we're a public agency, that's the law. We're a public agency, we work for the public, so the public has a right to know.
Our challenge is, our challenge, you see, is that there, there's a lot of rules that we have to follow. You can't even imagine this, but the United, the United States Supreme Court about a year ago decided that panhandling is a free speech right.
So is that what they're looking at, that they're doing when they're out in the street walking around doing whatever?
So if, well, if they, if, if somebody approaches you and asks for money, okay, and you say no, and they turn and go away, then that was, that's, that's not violation of law. Now, if they get aggressive and pin you into a corner or something like that and try to, that turns out to be armed robbery, but, see, that's a fine, it's a fine line. It's a very difficult thing, and so how many, how many calls does the police department respond to in a year?
Your Honor, about 13,000 on average.
Okay, so how many does Casper respond to?
I don't, I don't know that number.
How about Lander?
Um, I can tell you that we lead, we answer more calls for service than Lander and the Sheriff's Department combined.
I'm sorry.
We answer more calls for service in a year than the Lander Police Department and the Sheriff's Department combined.
So if Lander doesn't seem to have the, you know...
No, it's, it's, it's really interesting that they, well, that's, that's an issue...
They have a no town lines, obviously.
I don't believe so.
That's not true. That's not true.
And I want to tell you something about Lander.
Okay.
It is a different town. It's got a different amount of people in it. It, it's got different demographics, everything. I mean, every town is going to be different. But the reality is, every town struggles with crime. Lander, for example, I work at the prosecutor's office, so I get to see stuff like this. They've been dealing a lot more than normal with shoplifting, for example. Now, that's something we've dealt with a lot over here, and it just happens. Now, it's difficult to, you know, sit there and compare one to the other, but let me tell you something a little bit about what you were talking about, a revolving door. We can't just sit there and with every person that gets drunk, just say you're going to go to jail for the rest of your life.
I'm not asking for that.
And I know you're not, but it's impossible. We couldn't do it. We, we can sit there and try to provide them opportunities to do treatment, and that happens a lot. And it would be good probably to sometimes sit down and talk with, for example, the Volunteers of America. They do a lot of treatment. They have a treatment facility here. They also send people out to treatment to Sheridan. They do inpatient treatment there. There's a lot of different facilities around the state that provide treatment opportunities for people. The problem is, that takes money. The problem is, that takes money. Uh, and it takes someone who's willing to do it. So if you have people that come in here and they're getting arrested and released, arrested and released, we have a municipal judge who does the best she can to try to encourage these folks to do treatment. She gives them many opportunities to do that. I used to work at the city prosecutor's, uh, as the city prosecutor, as a matter of fact, before I was elected on, to the council. And that is something that she tries to do. Um, but there's still only so much you can do. Even when you're sitting there and they look at the dimensions of, of, of people in terms of what they need for treatment, one of the things they consider is readiness for change. And if you've got someone who's not ready to change, that makes it very difficult and they're not going to be very receptive to treatment. So, so the reality is, what you're bringing up is a significant issue that we are trying to address all the time. The Solutions Committee is a big part of that. Uh, the Parks Committee also discusses it. It's something that we are constantly thinking about. When we sat there and wrote our city council goals for the year, it was, I, I was there. It was, I think, the very first thing that was brought up on the goals. What are we going to do about this? The point is, there's not an easy answer. There's a lot of things that we can do and there's a lot of things we're trying to do. The one thing that I would say needs to happen, though, from the citizen's standpoint, is they need to do exactly what you're saying, which is to report it. And not to be afraid of reprisal, and, and here's why I say that. For the most part, I'm going to tell you right now, when you're reporting somebody and there's somebody drunk in the street, there's going to be, they're going to just be taken home or they might be taken to the VOA or something like that. There's not going to be some, uh, report or anything like that that they're going to get a hold of down the road. Okay, so for the most part, that's not going to happen. So you don't need to be as worried about that. And if that did happen, tell the police about it. Tell them about your fears. They can try to tell you some things about what can happen with that. So you really need to, and, and one of the most important things we need, if you want to think of what the citizens can do, is to report it. That's part of what we've been excited about with the city park being used. When the city park gets used, then if something's going on there, people are going to say something. They're not just going to let it go on.
But the city park is a disaster area. You have them in the, they're fornicating in the little bathrooms. They're doing all ki... It's filthy.
And you've been there and you've seen this happen?
My neighbors go, I'm not going to take my children down there. It's not safe. So, so they don't get to use the skate thing you put in? That splash thing you guys are going to put in? They're just going to do the same thing they always do. That's what they do. They mess it up.
If you're using something and you report it, that can go a long way to helping us make the park better. If we just sit there and right off the park is something we're not going to use, it's never going to get better. But if you use it and you actually report it to the police so they can do something, then we can do something.
That's the point I was trying to say. You do have a huge problem because more than so than the crime, you've got people who's not going to report it. Because they're saying they're not doing anything and I'm... And, and then I read, you said something about somebody said we were negative. Yes, your citizens have become very negative because they're so friggin' frustrated. They went from frustration, coming here and then calling and nothing's happening. They don't see anything happening. Then they either go into, uh, negative and then after that, they just go absent. They just... Riverton. And Riverton deserves better than that. It was a great little town when I was a kid. I'm not... That was a long time ago. But, but I was raised in, in, when Riverton was mostly farms. It was a farming community.
Sure.
Then farming sort of dropped away and the oil came in. And, you know, now what my neighbor who works for an oil company goes, it's drying out. So, but it changed. Somewhere in there, it changed and got bad. And so, you know, I don't ever remember having this kind of trouble when I was a kid that I had on the farm, so I didn't know about. But what I'm telling you is, it's, I'm trying to tell you, you're having a problem with citizens also not reporting. And, you know, he'd always tell me, if I don't know about it, I can't fix it. He would always say that to me and I, you know, I, I agree with you. It should be reported, no matter what. And then if you're threatened by, or somebody... Who was the lady who called, you said, and, and then she called the police? On the corner about, remember?
Oh, yeah, I had a neighbor who, that happened too, and then the Indians tore up her place. Or the, because they were messing up the, what used to be the Golden Corral. I don't know what it is now. And she had hell. And they broke her windows, her basement windows, tried to break in. And that's, I mean, I hear that and I don't want that trouble. I don't want to deal with it. And I sure as heck don't want somebody throwing a piece of meat over the fence and killing my dogs.
And the thing is, is that if you want something done, you got to be reporting. And I get exactly what you're saying. I understand. I think the chief could attest, I have called the police multiple times. If I see something, I'm going to call. I've had drunk people that have been coming by somewhere where I was driving by. I just saw them walking by on the sidewalk. I saw them stumble into the grass. I called the police. I've been driving by city park and I've seen people fighting and I called the police. Now, if you don't call the police, though, it just keeps happening. So that's the, that's the issue, is you need to be, you need to be calling if you see that because we can't address it without it.
I feel safe if I do it and that my dogs are safe. Because that's basically in the end, her and those dogs are all I've got. So why am I having to adjust the way I live because something can't be done? That's, that's all we're asking. And we're asking for something to, you know, patrol or make them uncomfortable, something. I mean, so you're saying if I get drunk and snuggle around three times or forty times, you're just going to... If I'm not ready for help, which I would never do, of course, but that's the way it is.
Okay, but, but what do you see the solution? To sentence people to a hundred and eighty days in jail and who know, get out, put them in again?
Make them uncomfortable.
This, these people, these people are uncomfortable sleeping under a tree at forty below zero. You put them in jail, they get three meals a day and a nice bed. See, neither do we. That's our challenge. Mike?
Your Honor, I, I guess one of the main things I see is we can't succumb to just thinking there's nothing we can do, so we shouldn't do anything. And so I guess, and I understand your concern, okay? But being drunk and vagrant in public is something that is difficult to deal with. Okay, but if you turn them in and then they assault you or they destroy your property, that's a crime that can have some more significant consequences. So, you know, that chain of not reporting because you don't think anything is going to happen is not the way to fix the problem. Okay, and as much as I would hate to say we want to see the crime statistics go up by more people getting turned in, but guess what? We have to turn in people before the police, the police cannot be everywhere at all times in every neighborhood, you know, with the seventeen to twenty officers that we have. You know, they have all kinds of stuff to cover. And so I would just urge, the only way you're ever going to win long-term is you've got to call the police and let them get involved. And if you see somebody messing with your property or messing with your house or harassing you, then you need to call them again because we can't succumb to the bullying of somebody making you afraid to call the police and so then they can get away with doing anything they want to do.
Or get some pressure, you know, they're going to do anything.
Right.
Give them a chance.
So, so, you know, it's, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy if people say, well, the police don't do anything, so I'm not going to call them. Well, they sure can't do anything if you don't call them.
And, and if you have an issue where you call the police and they don't do anything, then feel free to come and talk to us. We can do something about that.
And I'm directing this at the entire public, not you specifically, because I know you will say something. And that's a great thing. It's a great thing, okay? And, and I'll tell the public the same thing I've told you is, until the police know there's a problem in an area, they don't have any way to, to work on solving it.
So how do you get the public to help you?
If they see something, they need to call them.
No, that, you and I, okay, you're preaching, you're quiet here.
Right.
How do you get the public to understand that they have to do this to save people?
We used to. Nobody ever used to. Like we never got one phone call.
Well, if, if, if your friends and neighbors, if you tell them that, hey, I saw a problem up around the library and I called the police and they put extra patrols on there, that's going to help. They'll know that they reacted.
See, I want, yeah, that's what I want to hear. What do we go, what can we do to make it better?
Ben, you, you, excuse me, and I'm, I'm going to jump in. You said something and that right there is the "we" part. It takes the community members. It takes the police officers. It takes the council. It takes everybody. And if people start absolving themselves of responsibility, any of those, "we", things fall apart. And, and I totally get the understanding that, that it's hard and it's, changes in the last twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years have made it harder. But the way it's going to turn around is we all have to actually do something. All of us. And if, if the, so you're asking, well, what do we do as community members? They have to band together and, and with us, with the police officers, with everybody and say, this is going to change. If your attitude, and I say this not to you, again, like Mike said, not to you, but to the community. If your attitude is nothing's going to change, then the self-fulfilling prophecy is doomed. It will never change. So we have to, as a community, come together and say, it will change. It will change. And then, that's the start. If you say it will never change, that's already the start.
It started, yeah.
But don't you think, okay, so the community starts wanting to call in, but you, you just said, it's a revolving door. That's all we can do. So what, it's...
You can't stop. You cannot stop if it, because there will be people who do seek treatment. There will be people who seek treatment. There have been. There already have been examples of people who quit the revolving door. They were tired of it and they wanted to do something. But we would have never known about that had they not been referred multiple times. Finally, it sticks and finally they do something. That's what a community should do, is just keep trying. And then we're going to see change. It's when they quit trying that it falls apart. So you're right. I mean, it is a revolving door. There will some that will spend their entire lives in a revolving door in all kinds of crime. Doesn't, not just public drunkenness, but everything. But we're going to keep trying. That's the point. We're not going to stop trying. That's, that, that's ultimately the point.
So when I hear, when I say, like, I'm going to the city council, which is pretty good, I'm going to say shame on you.
There you go.
Yes. I like it.
Yes.
Your Honor, may I say something?
Go ahead, Chief.
So Beverly had some issues with some transits up by the library.
Yeah.
So I put an extra patrol up there. Uh, our officers were not seeing what she saw, so I called her the other day. We had a fifteen or twenty minute conversation. I explained to her that we would try to figure out what the problem was. My point is, the police are not not doing anything. As the chief of police, I actually reached out to you and said, our officers are not seeing what you're seeing. Please give me more information.
You know, I think I reported that blonde guy I kept telling, because I...
Right.
Michael's up there.
So, so my point is, the police are not not doing anything.
I know that. I know that. But I know that. But other people don't know that. They're the ones that's saying it. That's when I'm going to have to go, shame on you.
That's right.
You reported, you reported shame on you. Yup, it's not going to be, they don't know about it. Just like when the shotgun went off or that they killed the people.
Right.
You guys don't stand outside the building with a handgun shot. Somebody should have called you. You know, they should have called you.
Ms. Frank, when the police officers don't see what you see, what do you think happened?
You picked him up.
No.
He did. He said...
It made him uncomfort... It makes him uncomfortable.
I'm sorry, Kate.
Makes him uncomfortable. When I, I owned several rental properties. When I have a BIA police officer as a tenant, the people around the old Sears building disappeared. There was a police officer, BIA cop, parked in the backyard. Okay, so when, when, if you don't call and you don't get the visitations that you want, when you shine a light on something, it makes whatever is there uncomfortable. That's what causes people to change. You have to believe in the system. You just have to. And, and, and one or two or three times is not an ineffective police department. If we were to live in Chicago and we had twenty-five killings on a weekend, I would say we had a problem. But we don't. We have a nearby reservation which we have an overflow onto our city. And without the police's help in making people uncomfortable, you'll have more of that, not less of it. So if you...
That's what we were saying.
If you live at West Park, if you live at West Park and they're frequenting the library, it's because they feel comfortable there because there's no visible patrols. We have had patrols at the park and we're having problems there now because we have a lot of maintenance there. We don't, we, we haven't been able to schedule any type of conference in there. And, and so we are at odds right now with the city park not being fully utilized because we can't use it because the roads tore up. So if you please, 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 busy the police officers, nine-one-one. Call them. Everyone here pays for that benefit. And if you don't utilize it and your friends don't utilize it, we're, it's not going to get any better. It's going to get worse.
See, I, I know that. I, I, you know, and I have no friends. I really don't.
Unfortunately...
I have no friends. I just tell them, this is what I'm going to do.
This is...
Come back at me.
This is going, this is going out on the television. Everybody is listening to what you say. That's why we wanted you to speak in the microphone.
What television?
Well, there's a camera over there. There's a camera over there. There's a camera over there.
No.
There's a camera right back there.
And there's a camera on, so you're on television. So everybody knows your name and that you complained about the lack of police coverage in your area.
I'm not complaining about that. I'm...
But I want you to complain because that's what good citizens do and you're a good citizen.
I am a good, and I'm a good employee too. But I, I...
Mike knows that.
I have to tell him every time. I just want, I just want the other people to do it too. Because me alone...
We want you to, we, we appreciate you taking... It takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing. It takes a lot of courage to stand up there by yourself. There's nobody in the audience clapping and, and carrying on. But it takes a lot of courage to speak out. It does. And courage solves problems.
He said he would do. He called me back.
He will.
He did what he, you know, he did.
I even gave her my cell phone number.
And he did.
I don't even have that.
I know.
But what I'm saying is, I just wanted you to know.
What was that again, Eric?
Not only...
And we appreciate that. We really do.
Yeah.
When, when the people come and say, we don't like the way you're shoveling snow to this side or that side, we try and accommodate. We're trying. There's not one here that doesn't want you to succeed in making this a better city. We pray for that.
It can be a better city. That's what I'm saying.
We know it.
It takes everybody, everybody, not just the council.
And, and I want to tell you something too. One of the best things about the city of Riverton, and this is one of my favorite things about this place, is you go to places where people are trying to raise money and they fill the room. They fill whatever space they have in. People are always willing to donate to good causes. We were just talking about the splash pad earlier. They have raised an incredible amount of money to get a splash pad. They have raised an incredible amount of money to get a splash pad. We had the, the skating park. That wasn't something that the, that the council sat there and, and, and found money for. That was citizens doing that. So I want, when you're thinking about this, what can be done? I don't want you to discount the power that our citizens have to come together and make change. There's a lot of organizations out there. There's different neighborhoods that do like neighborhood watches, that sort of thing. So there's things that you can do as a citizen about this. We're going to be trying to things that we can do and the chief is going to be trying the things that he can do. But what you've been talking about a lot are things that citizens can band together and make a difference. And I think it's something that you can definitely put work into. And we would, I think, on the council, we're telling you, would definitely support more efforts that you would be making to try to raise awareness of the need to be calling the police and letting them know about this stuff, not just giving up.
How do you feel about that? Okay. What do you mean, how do I feel about it?
Well, I'm the one who steps up and I, I'll go. You...
I'm not so much one that will. I, like I say, I, well, for one, I don't have a cellphone, so usually if you see them, you're out in your car and, but, like I say, I just, and maybe it's because of where I've lived before, I don't know, but I just don't want to...
Scared.
...call and say, hey, this is going on in my neighborhood and y'all start coming. And the next thing I know, I walk out to a problem. And so, to me, if I protect, the way I protect myself, and I guess maybe that's selfish, the way I protect myself is, don't make the call. That way, my name doesn't get out and I don't have any repercussions on my house, me, my dogs. So I guess maybe it's more of a protection or a self-defense mechanism. I don't know.
But if there's thirteen thousand calls in a year...
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen hundred.
Thirteen thousand.
It's...
Thirteen thousand.
It's thirteen thousand. It's unlikely that anybody could pick you out out of a crowd.
That's true.
You're in good company.
And the police don't broadcast, you know, Beverly Frank just called to turn in so-and-so on the public radio or anything like that. So, you know.
Ma'am, we can put your, um, put neighborhood on an extra patrol. And so, um, I will get with you when we're done with this and get what neighborhood that is and we'll put you on an extra patrol. So what happens there on an extra patrol is that our officers will go through once an hour for the next week or two, however long you want to put it on there, and just make more of a presence. So we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. That's easy. That's an easy solution.
Thanks, Chief.
And that's what I meant by, as, if they see them, they're going to be uncomfortable. Make them uncomfortable. They'll move someplace else, go someplace else, do whatever you want to do. That's, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Ladies for coming. Okay. Uh, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor. Approval of the minutes, August twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, September fourth, two thousand eighteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for September fourth, two thousand eighteen. Ordinance number eighteen dash zero zero eight on second reading, off-street parking. An ordinance amending Title fifteen, Buildings and Construction, to revise Chapter fifteen point three six, off-street parking requirements of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Yes, your honor. Recommendations from the finance committee are for consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and four thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Manual check in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-six cents. Payroll liabilities for August seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of two hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, for a total of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty cents. This is in addition to a recommendation from the finance committee as to the commitment of ten thousand dollars from the available beautification budget to be paid to the Riverton Splash Pad Group.
Thank you. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve consent. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? Uh, what do you think about this? Where's the right place for this motion on that? Ten thousand dollars? After, right after this or...
Your honor, I believe this is part of the consent agenda as you have it so up...
So if we approve the consent agenda, that will do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Your honor, I, I did want to make a, make a quick comment. Your motion was to transfer the money from the beautification line item to the Splash Pad Group. I'm wondering if it maybe should be to assign the money or commit the money? And then, that way, when anything needs to be paid, when a bill that needs to be paid pertaining to the Splash Pad project comes, we would just charge it to the beautification line item as opposed to transferring it specifically to the Splash Pad Group.
Gotcha. So I guess I would amend my recommendation then to be for the commitment of the ten thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Is that okay with that? We're all okay with that?
Is that okay, I guess, with the finance?
Okay. So it's moved and seconded. Lance and Mike. Okay. Uh, any other comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Consideration of forestry grant application. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, your honor. Um, what we are asking for today is for council to approve application for a forestry grant. This forestry grant is, will be approximately three thousand dollars. It is completely reimbursable and will address the current inventory and the condition of the stock of, uh, of our trees and, and the like within our community and make recommendations thereof. This was a grant that was brought to, um, the tree board. The reason it is before council is because this was not a budgeted line item, even though we are going to have a completely offsetting revenues. We have already checked on the pricing of, of the assessment and, uh, the three thousand dollars will cover it. So we expect nothing to be spent more than what will be reimbursed. And we would recommend approval thereof.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the forestry grant application.
Your honor, I'd move we approve an application to the Wyoming State Forestry Division for grant funds related to the education development community forestry program.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion. Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor vote aye and it passes. Consideration of Hertz lease agreement. Airport division managers report, please.
Thank you, your honor. Coming for you tonight is the Hertz lease agreement. As you know, Hertz provides ground transportation options to our airport and our community. For several years, they've operated out of Riverton Airport through a third-party agreement. Uh, on July first, two thousand eighteen, Hertz closed their counter after a resignation from a third-party vendor. And Hertz was operating on a month-to-month lease at that time with the city of Riverton. The airport board has notified Hertz that prior to recon, recommencing operations, that they would need to execute a new lease and a concession agreement with the city. Hertz intends to reopen at Riverton as a corporation location. And doing so, they will, they'll have corporate employees running the counter, more control over staffing levels, better hours of operation, better inventory, and improved customer service levels. Staff has worked with the airport board and Hertz prepare a lease agreement with terms commencing September first, two thousand eighteen, and terminating on June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. And there'll be an option in there for a successive one-time term renewal. Uh, the annual rate is based upon the square foot rate and includes a ten percent concession fee. Hertz will also have a twenty-four designated parking spaces up at the terminal. And it's staff's recommendation to execute the lease between Hertz Corporate and the city of Riverton. And with that, honor, if I'm here to entertain any questions.
Thank you. The chair entertain a motion to approve the Hertz lease agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Questions for Paul? Go ahead.
Your honor, um, Paul, in the lease, was there any specific language? I know in the airport board, we had had a discussion regarding making sure that they had coverage at each incoming flight. Was any of that designated in the lease?
Chairman, Council Bailey, uh, I think it was, they have to put in writing, but they do have all flights covered. And if they're going to change anything, I believe it was, Tony might be able to help me on that, but I think the wording was, they have to give us notice if they're going to change anything.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
On page six, uh, page three, section six denotes hours of operation, uh, in the operation of the automobile rental concession here in granted, uh, provides sufficient personnel and equipment to meet the reasonable demand of the services, uh, and shall submit in writing its hours of operation to the city within five days of execution of the lease. So at this point, there is not a designated time, but we are expecting that that time, of course, for this to be designated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Tim?
How does this compare to the amount, uh, for the lease we had entered into previously with the, with the third-party provider? Is it still the same ten percent concession as, so financially, I mean, this is the same as what we'd been doing before?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is a memorandum of understanding with the town of Shoshone. City administrators report, please.
Thank you, your honor. The town of Shoshone per, um, FCA has requested per an MOU for the city of Riverton to, uh, provide, uh, equipment and personnel to assist with hauling away of the downtown debris from the demolition that is expected to occur. That demolition is not complete, is not scheduled as a hard date at this time. Uh, one of the items that you will note within the MOU is that those dates are, are left blank. Those, that is done intentionally because that date has moved consistently. Uh, at one point, it was June and then it was October and then it was, we have to do it in the next two weeks and now it's back to October at some point. As such, uh, if council chooses to enter into the MOU, uh, we would, we would kind of denote that that, that date would need to be left open and for, for staff to work with. The town of Shoshone is working with the solid waste district in order to, uh, receive a decreased, uh, rate for disposal in order to cap that landfill as well. Uh, that agreement is ongoing and Andy Frye from the solid waste district is coordinating this project. The questions that came up with regard to the city's involvement within the MOU were, uh, questions of first, in more minor, uh, compensation in terms of using our, using our staff and our equipment and our fuel in order to assist. Secondly, it, one of the questions was, if we do remove these individuals from our workforce, then obviously, that's going to reduce the amount of work that is being done within our organization. I would denote, we have had the conversation with staff and it is possible to do it and we would make adjustments accordingly. However, it is, it is notable as per within the memo that that, uh, the amount of work that we plan to do this fall to include road patching and, and similar things would not, of course, occur at the same rate that would have occurred otherwise. The large challenge that we had with this project, um, was the existence of asbestos within the, within the, um, debris and within the facilities. Since the time of the, writing this memo, we have learned that, um, while they do expect asbestos to be present, they cannot at this time identify what kind it is. That is per our conversations today. Second, they cannot get in the buildings to remedy this problem or to remediate the problem simply because the buildings are so structurally unsound, that creates a challenge for them. Uh, we understand that this, we understand that that becomes a little bit of a challenge, but regardless, we cannot identify what those items are. So that does cause staff some concern in assigning our individuals to do that. Um, furthermore, the, um, I'm sorry, I've lost my place. The, uh, we have also learned, uh, today that there, we are still waiting on a little bit of information from the town of Shoshone or the solid waste district, however you want to look at it, uh, with regard to an individual to be present to oversee that disposal. They are currently planning on wetting the debris and have been allowed the opportunity to wet that debris. However, the, the, the substances that may or may not be present at this point, um, are a little bit, are a little bit unknown. The, sorry, missed a spot. A, as, as we look at the, as we look at the project, one of the, one of the concerns we had came about with regard to our conversations with LGLP, which is our insurance provider. These types of items are not covered with under our LGLP insurance, so we did have some concerns about that. Due to these challenges, less so with regard to the compensation. That is minor and helping our, helping our neighbors is, is, is a positive item. But having our staff away from, away from their duties here with some unknown pollutants and with some liability concerns did raise some questions for all of staff. We did manage to make some modifications, um, should council choose to, uh, enter into the MOU or direct staff, uh, in another way, to make sure that some of this was addressed. LGLP did note that we should have a waiver of liability. The, our city attorney has drafted that waiver of liability. That waiver of liability is included within the document that you have now. The, uh, coordinator for the project has looked at it and was okay with that waiver of liability. That places a good deal of the liability on the, on the town of Shoshone with regard to any claims. However, the extent to which those claims can be applied, um, should, because they have LGLP as well and LGLP doesn't cover pollutants, um, leaves some questions to be answered. At this, at this point, this is not a recommended project at this, at, at our current point. However, we've covered a little bit, I've jumped around a little bit and I apologize for that. It's been an ongoing conversation today. I would happily stand for any questions that you might have.
So, uh, before we go any further, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the town of Shoshone.
I move we approve the memorandum of other, understanding with Shoshone.
I would second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Now, discussion. Kyle, you had your...
Um, when you say, "Equipment," what are we talking about?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
The requested, the requested equipment is two personnel and two trucks for two weeks.
No front-end loaders, no, no bulldozers, no, um, track hose, just two trucks?
Two dump trucks and two personnel.
And, and why are we using, and those are going to be probably fourteen-yard trucks or thereabouts or whatever we have here? Why would you be using that when the solid waste district has equipment much larger, much more effective than what we have to use?
Your honor, I can't answer that question. That is simply their request.
So let me give you a little background on this. This, this came up at, at our FCA meeting like, I don't know, six, nine, maybe nine months ago now. All right? And so, the solid, here's, so the solid waste district has got a grant to close the Shoshone dump. Okay? So, uh, that's like about a million bucks. All right? The Shoshone dump is two miles out of town. If these buildings can come down now, they could go to the Shoshone dump and get buried out there and the closure fees would cover that. If we can't get this pulled together to make that work and the town of Shoshone has some grants to work on this, but they don't have enough to actually get the job done. So they've made an appeal to the county commissioners. The county commissioners are going to use their haul and their loader. Okay? The town of Lander says, we've got a couple of dump trucks that we can send over for a few days. And Shoshone's got a truck and, you know, and so, and even Dubois says, yeah, we've probably got a truck we could send down.
But the landfill is going not to Lander, it's going to Shoshone.
It's going to the Shoshone landfill. It's a two-mile haul. Okay? If that has to get closed, okay? Then, all of this stuff will have to be trucked to Sandra. Okay? A forty-mile one-way. Well, the cost of this project has gone up.
Exponentially.
Yeah, exponentially. All right? So if we could all chip in, that was the idea. If all the municipalities, the county could all chip in, then we could knock this off in a hurry and get everything into the landfill and the solid waste could get it closed. Okay? So the solid waste has got equipment in this. Okay? So we've got solid waste district putting equipment into it, Riverton, Lander, County, Dubois, maybe. Okay? And so we've got a lot of folks that are going to help to try to contribute to this so that we could pull it together. So that's the...that was the idea, and we said, "This is a great opportunity because we don't have very many opportunities where we can work together with the county." And so that was the thing. So the county says, "No, we've got these coverts that we're going to replace. We have to have the haul. So we can't do it now, but we could do it in October." And then they said, "Oh, we've changed our mind." This was like last week. "We changed our mind. We're going to gravel 300 miles of road or something like that, and we don't need the haul for the next two weeks." So can you tear those buildings down right now? Mike?
So I have one question, and I would assume maybe you would know the answer. Is the landfill still charging the town of Shoshone to get rid of the waste?
No.
Okay, so they are participating...
They are.
Per se.
Okay. So no tipping fee to the town of Shoshone. So this is one of those deals where we've tried to pull everybody in Fremont County together to work on a project. Okay? But you know, staff has looked at that, and so then they are anxious because they can see some challenges that those of us in a meeting singing kumbaya didn't consider. Go ahead.
I guess my main concern of this, for one, I guess the city of Riverton had a very challenging time this year making its budget work the way it is. And so one of the concerns would be the financial aspect. I mean, I guess if it's $5,000, I'm sure we can figure out a way to make that work. My bigger concern is just the overall liability of dealing with unknown substances, you know... And I guess if we can somehow get the insurance company to put their blessing on this, that we are not sticking our neck out. You know, the $5,000 is one thing, but if all of a sudden we have two drivers that just miraculously get cancer because they were exposed to dust from asbestos, that's a significantly bigger number. And so I guess as long as we're covered in that respect, I mean, I wouldn't have near as much heartburn about it.
One more. The only...Mike, in remediation of asbestos, there is no sudden onset of some type of strange disease, but I will mention that historically, you've got to watch those individuals for the rest of their lives for asbestos removal. But if we are driving trucks and delivering to Shoshone, we probably have the appropriate respirators available to us, don't we? And somebody can be instructed on proper usage and fitting of those respirators so that those operators have a minimal amount of exposure to any type of dust, I would assume. Is that possible?
Your Honor, I believe it is possible to purchase said respirators. I do not believe we have that equipment present. So that would be an expenditure of some sort.
And so the challenge here is that we're working with an unknown thing.
Yeah.
Because supposedly, 10 years ago, all those buildings had the asbestos mitigated in. Okay? But see, so...
Mitigated just means painting.
Well, okay, but see, so we don't...the problem is, and because now, we can't go in the buildings to look. Okay? Now, and that's...so it's all different people.
Yeah.
Okay? And so now, because we don't know what actually did take place, there's always this unknown. Tim?
So I guess the biggest issue right now is that I don't think any of us are saying, "Absolutely not, we don't want to help out the town of Shoshone."
No.
We're just saying there's a lot of discomfort right now with things. There's a lot of unanswered questions. We're thinking about equipment. We're wanting to make sure that no matter what happens, we're taking care of our people that would be going out there, not being paid by the town of Shoshone, but by us. And so I think the point is, is we're not saying we don't want to try to do what we can to help. It's that we need more answers. So I don't know if maybe what we could do is get some of the answers to some of these questions such that we'd be satisfied, we could talk about it again another time? But I mean, I guess, I'm at the point where right now, I can see why staff doesn't recommend this, because there's things that we just don't know right now.
But can we...if the time is now, then can we mediate those concerns in a timely manner? I mean, if you watch today's hearing, it might be next year or the year after before
You're talking about the speed of government?
Yeah.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I can comment to that. I do not know if we can have every answer that the council may ask. I believe we can have more answers. We have received some additional information in the last 24 hours that I can't tell you what...we thought one thing was in there, and we were told, "Well, there's asbestos in there. We don't know what it is, can't go in to look at it." So it becomes a number of questions. I believe that in two weeks, we could have at least some better idea and provide that to you. You couldn't be...I don't think you'll be worse off. And I don't think it...from my understanding of the timeframe they're working with right now, it would not negatively affect our involvement if we so chose to move forward.
So then I'd move we table this, then?
Table. Movement, motion table?
Second.
Second, moving second that we table. All in those favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion is tabled for two weeks, right? Next regular meeting?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. Okay, so now we can hear from the Civil Air Patrol. Okay? Mr. Falcon, come on up. Bring your associates.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Thank you for having us tonight. We don't want to take up too much of your time, but I'd like to introduce two of my colleagues from our squadron. This is Colonel Beverly Carlson and Colonel Mike Carlson out of Cody, and they are part of our squadron. Beverly, by the way, likes to go by BJ, so we'll just introduce her as BJ. And just wanted to thank you again for your support of our organization. If you remember, last year, we came before you and explained who we are and what we did, and we asked you if you would support our Reach Across America program up at the Mountain View Cemetery. And Mayor Baker very graciously gave us a proclamation for the event, and we used it. The event went very well. It was well-received, and it was...been approved again for this year, so we'll be doing that again. And I just wanted to give you a little update on our progress. We are now in the...we now have an element here in Fremont County. The membership is divided kind of equally between Lander, Riverton, and the city. So we now have nine members, and we have three more applications in. We have other people showing express. So this is very good news for Fremont County. Not only do we have a Civil Air Patrol presence here, again, there used to be a squadron here back in the 1950s and 60s, and so we're basically bringing back to Riverton what it once enjoyed before. And we like to say that the Civil Air Patrol in general has been growing in membership while Wyoming has had some difficulty. Here, we're actually growing, so that's a very good sign for Wyoming that we're growing. Last year, the Civil Air Patrol saved over 100 lives. Six of those were in Wyoming. So we are doing our job, and we're very pleased to tell you that. And we look forward to working with the city council and the people of the Fremont County in the future. And I'd like to give Mike here an opportunity to explain a little about who he is and what he does, and then I'd like BJ to do the same, please.
Second-in-command, okay?
Second-in-command for the wing.
Okay.
We have something at the whole state.
Slide over.
Slide over.
Slide over so that the mic...
Mike, talk into that?
So that the mic will pick you up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I have been in Civil Air Patrol since 2002, and I'm really heavy into the cadet program. We used to have a cadet squadron in Cody, and I was the commander for several years, about nine years before I finally got rid of it. I'm still active in that squadron, although we're now at what we call a composite squadron. We have senior members and cadets, and we try to do all three of our missions, which is aerospace, emergency services, and cadet programs. I'm also second-in-command for the wing and the safety officer for the wing, so I'm heavily involved at the state level also. And it's just been great having Captain Falcon down here, heading up, trying to get another faction going in this area. I know we've had some people express some interest in this area earlier. We used to come down and hang out at the airport, do some glider flights and orientation flights for our cadets, and we'd have people say, "Oh, yeah, Civil Air Patrol. How can I get involved? Well, the nearest one is in Casper, Cody," which is quite a haul for somebody. So it's really nice, and he's obviously got some interest going here, and just hoping that we can just grow this area down here, and they can become their own squadron and be part of the squadron family.
That'll be great.
Yeah.
It'll be great. We look forward to that developing.
Yeah, that'd be really wonderful.
I am Lieutenant Colonel Mike Carlson, and I've been in Civil Air Patrol since 2001. Prior to that, I was a cadet back in the dinosaur years of '67 and '69. And we came back into it thinking that all we wanted to do was fly. We've changed that. We are heavily into cadets since there are three legs to the stool: cadet program, aeronautical education, and search and rescue, emergency services, we call it. And I, for the wing, am an incident commander, running both ground and air crews, and help out, whether it be through the police department or the sheriff's department if needed. We can bring down assets that can help in searches. And I just only can remember two that we've actually come down here. And that was on December the 24th. I can't remember which year, when we had a plane crash into the south end of the Wind Rivers. And then prior to that, there was the plane crash from the father and three boys that crashed just on the east side of Gannett Peak. So with that, I'm a pilot, so I do fly and do searches that way. I was the director of operations for the wing, and I've stepped down and have other people now taking over where I can convince them and help them along as their assistant. And at the Cody Cadet Squadron, I have many different hats, mostly operational, because of my background as an engineer and just planning and doing things like that. So again, having something starting up, both in the Lander and the Riverton area, is great. Seeing it back operating, hopefully to get it big enough that maybe an aircraft could be stationed at the airport, and being able to help out with the air searches that might occur within the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. There's an air show in Lander?
Lander Fly-In and Car Show and Car Show will be this Saturday, the evening.
Yeah. You're going to have a presence there?
Yes, we will be having some volunteers out there in support of that.
Great.
And I just wanted to explain, the main reason for coming tonight is, tonight is a singular day for us because tonight we promoted our first five cadets, and I believe I sent you a list of them by email.
You did.
So that's something we're very proud of, and we just wanted to mark the occasion by coming before the council and reporting our progress.
Yes, and I sent you an email this afternoon, but I don't know if you heard it or not.
I hadn't seen it.
Well, you can read it in the morning.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay.
Appreciate you all.
You bet. Well, thank you. We're excited about the possibility of having a functioning wing here in Fremont County.
All right, yes, sir.
Thank you for your efforts. The next item is council committee reports and council members' roundtable. And let me preface that by mentioning or calling attention to the fact that Mike's father passed away this week, and I want to express my condolences and hope he's holding up.
All right.
Okay? Lance, go ahead.
Yes, Your Honor. Just a short report on the Solutions Committee. Just wanted to announce that Trystine Grover is going to be chairing the committee. We kind of decided to formalize some leadership, and she will be chairing that group. And next week's meeting, we intend to finalize our projects for the year, to be able to come back to the council and report based on all of our work regarding a strategic plan, kind of what that plan's going to be. So kind of excited about putting all that together.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Tim?
I don't think I have anything. We are going to soon have a meeting, I guess, for the Senior Citizens Board, so hopefully next time we meet, I'll have a little bit more to talk about that, but looking forward to serving in that capacity. Intend to sometime, hopefully this week, sit down with me and kind of figure out exactly how to do that job. But I'm excited. I think it'll be a good opportunity and looking forward to it, and I'll hopefully have some more news for you next meeting.
Good, thank you, Tim. Mike?
Thank you. Again, I had my first airport hospital board meeting last Wednesday, and we also met with the group that was meeting, the city administrator and city folks, and another group regarding the hospital. And again, it's been a topic that's been on the top of everybody's mind, and I guess my main thing would be, I really hope people keep it positive and look for solutions to some of our issues and not just, you know, mudslinging because I think it's very counterproductive. And again, I really appreciate the people coming today and expressing their wishes to us, and I just hope people look for solutions and get people get out and get involved in the issues that are regarding the city because, you know, the more we all give our input in a positive manner and come up with solutions, the better off we're going to be long-term. And that's true whether it's the hospital or the Solutions Committee or many of the other things that we all have to deal with every day, you know, running the city and being residents of the city. And so again, being a positive input person that gives positive input into the scenario is going to be the biggest help, I think, that anybody can give. And I know it's a subject that we're all concerned about, and we all want to see it to the best resolution that we can. But it took a long time to get to the point we're at with the hospital, and it's going to take some time to get back, you know, where we would want it to be. And so I'm looking forward to working on the solutions for the problem, and I think people just need to have patience and don't be afraid to bring positive input into the scenario, and I will do my best to continue on with that. And I thank everybody for all the kind wishes that they've expressed to me and my family at the passing of my father, and so it's greatly appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Do you think there'd be a value if the city council passed a resolution in support of, I don't know how to say it, positive efforts to build medical service in Riverton?
I think that's something that we probably could work on. And again, I think, you know, there are positive things about where we need to go. So yes.
Okay. Tony, could you work on something like that for two weeks from now?
Yes, Your Honor. We'll have something for you to review.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, Kyle?
Sorry, Mike. I knew you were dead. Mike attended the Wednesday night meeting. I attended the Thursday morning cafeteria meeting at 7:30, and there was 90 to 120 people there, concerned citizens. And we have the mechanics here in Riverton to do more than what we are pertaining to do. in Riverton to do more than, than what we are pertaining to do. We have several retired physicians that are knowledgeable. We have a college president that is on the mainframe, Joanne McFarland, and for us to sit back and, and not be positive and ask for what we can do to help them is, is a mistake, a big mistake. We need to put our best foot forward. We solve the possible air closure, because we had one that didn't want, and we found another that did. We need to attack, not attack, we need to improve the communications in our community for the healthcare purpose, because without good healthcare, our city will not do well. And I, I don't have a, a solution at hand, but as Mike has said, it's a problem that's existed since 2006, when they made the report, and one of the doctors admitted that he made a mistake then, but that's not the problem. The problem is, we need to be proactive, we need to be positive, and we need to do whatever we need to do to make a facility a success, and without positive healthcare, we're not gonna be doing very well. And we've proved that by the parks, by skateboards, by all of that, and we've got volunteers, and if you need names and people to contact, to be on a committee, they're there. Joanne McFarland is heading that up, and Dr. Ghost is one of them, and all of those individuals have an insight into medical care far greater than we do. The questions, and I'm not gonna get into that and how the meeting was conducted, was very positive. The, the community of Riverton is desire, desiring in obtaining good healthcare. We need good healthcare, and people will probably not come here versus go somewhere else because of healthcare, so it behooves us, Tony, if you would do that. Thank you.
Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor. So, I was gonna report on the progress that we've made with the Parks Committee.
Okay.
The Parks Committee, we meet every other Monday, like I stated at last meeting. We just went over our last big park, which was J.C. Park, and we had a great idea to do a Facebook trivia game utilizing the City of Riverton's Facebook page. So, what we're going to do for this month, each week, we will take a picture of a park in Riverton. What we're trying to get is people to visit the parks, you know, get more people out there, so we will post a picture in a park, one of Riverton's city parks, and then we'll post on the City of Riverton Facebook, or, yes, City of Riverton Facebook page. And then that person has to take a selfie in that park, and they have to guess the right park. If they take a selfie and guess the right park, and they're the first ones to do that, they will win a prize. Prizes have been donated by CWC. I know Kyle's has a couple ideas in mind as well. Couple other businesses in town have also offered to donate a prize for that. Our next meeting is this coming Monday, and we will be meeting at the Veterans Park here behind City Hall, and we'll start gathering all of our recommendations to bring forward to city council for each one of our parks. I just wanna say that those individuals on this Parks Committee are just a really ambitious bunch, so I give them kudos for that. Not one person on that committee doesn't, is not a go-getter. You say that they're good at something, they get it done, so it's very impressive. And these are just volunteers. And that's something that I wanna say too, which has been said numerous times tonight and in the past, is, is to get involved. I'll tell you that you don't see a lot of the negative things that, that people say they see when you're involved. I'm one that walks ta, the town all the time. I go for a run every morning. I walk the rail, the trails, and the stuff that I do see, you see it for a little bit, but once you start frequenting that area, it goes away. As long as you're present, it'll eventually make its way out. And I said that since I got back home in 2015, you know, the only way to get bad out is to bring good in, the only way to bring, you know, turn on the light when darkness leaves. I wanna report on the splash pad. Like I said last time, we're trying to reach out for a little bit more funds, which we were able to accomplish tonight, $10,000, though we're still reaching for a little bit more in order for our, our sponsor bricks and that type of stuff. So, if you have a Facebook page, if you don't mind taking a look at our splash pad page, we do have a GoFundMe account set up. We set that up a few days ago, so we're still trying to make progress on that as well. But, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. City Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple small items and then a couple more. There is a force meeting next week. WAMCAT, the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Clerks and Treasurers is meeting next week. Kristin and Mia will, will be attending as members of that. We're appreciative of their work in that group, simply because it has been a great resource to us as a community and continues to be. One of the things that council has talked about, per their goals, is community events, and one of those is going on this coming weekend. The Roasters Rendezvous is going to be here in town. Council approved parts of that that have come before you previously, so that's one of those events that's going to be going on, that is going to be something that hopefully happens every year and that we can build upon as a community. Region Four meeting for WAM will be held the 12th, in, in the evening of the 12th, in There, the work session currently has a discussion, the coming work session has a discussion of the Google Map. I would point out that staff has been working diligently on that, especially, more specifically, Megan, because she's been doing some great work. We're really looking forward to bringing that to you, because I, from what I've already seen, that she's been working on is exceptional. I think it's gonna be a good tool for this community. So, thank you to Megan. We do have, and I would ask, make sure Councilman Godey, I'm not mistaken, we do have scheduled a discussion on habitual, on the habitual drunkard highlights for council. Is that not for, for the work session? That's what I had on our schedule, I'm sorry. I think it was a highlight, it was a highlight comment session, not necessarily a final document.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, at, one of the things that the Solution Committee has been working on is a habitual drunkard statute. That is a modification of an already existing statute within city code. We would be looking forward to highlighting that and explaining exactly what those efforts have been.
I think, Tony, what you're thinking, at the last meeting, we were still finalizing that draft and hoped to apply that work session, so we hadn't had another meeting to kind of double-check and make sure that's the case. So, if it's ready, I think we were ready to, to bring it to work, to the work session.
Okay, great. Also, there will, this next work session will actually have an action item with the modification, or a change to the splash pad contract that is currently in place. We'll have that prepared for council, so there will be a vote, there will be a little bit more than a work session, there will be a voting item on for your consideration, and we will advertise accordingly. The MOU and the resolution will come back to you. The, the resolution on hospital care will come back to council at the second meeting, in addition to all the other normal items that would come before you otherwise. A couple comments. We had some comments this evening. Having been relatively new to this community, I understand that we have some challenges. However, I wouldn't, I would simply point out something that this council already knows, that I have watched, I have, I have seen nothing but a willingness to address these challenges head-on. We understand that we have a substance abuse challenge in the community. Nobody has sidestepped it. It's part of our community, and, sorry, not community, but council goals, is to address these items. The Solutions Committee is working towards those ends. What I would ask of the public, what I would ask of anybody watching tonight or that wants to be involved, is to give us your ideas. It's not just calling the police in order to get us, in order to call for police help, it's trying to help us find new ways to address a challenge. The more minds we have in this room, the, the better it's going to be. That committee, it works diligently to try to find good things to do, to try to find ways to address enforcement in our community. That's part of that habitual drunkard ordinance that we'll bring to your attention. So, we are, we are asking for help all the time, because I know everybody does wanna do good things, and I appreciate the work that is being done by this group, because I know, just as this council has banged our heads against the, I mean, trying to figure out something to do, trying to approach that multi-pronged challenge, I know the community wants to do things too. So, we invite that participation. They can contact the chief of police, they can contact me, they obviously can contact all of council, and we are happy to hear those, not happy to hear the comments, that's wrong, but happy to hear the ideas that are coming forward. So, we are appreciative of that. And then the last thing, Councilman Larson, to your comments and to the other comments, I've had the opportunity to attend, I think, all of, most if not all, of the community meetings, of the leadership meetings of, and I was pres, I was able to be present with the two groups and managed to end up in a more formal capacity as, as moderator or mediator in this, and, and looking forward to that. We, we are appreciative of everybody's willingness to go to the table and have that conversation, and we hope to bring forward something that, that improves, that improves, that, that provides for good medical services within our community. And that's not a comment on Sage West. That is simply say, we want good, we want good medical facilities, good medical services within our community, so we look forward to working with everybody on that. Any comments council has, or that, or thoughts, we're wel, I'm, I'm welcome to receive them anytime, in any manner, and I will try to bring those forward to the group as, as I can, so.
The thing that was most concerning, and this is not a negative comment, was Fremont County, the usage of Fremont County healthcare will not be the same as it was in 2015. It's changed. Fremont healthcare will be different in 2018 and 2019, and, and the audience was solely from Riverton. And we don't look at ourselves as Fremont County, we look at ourselves as Riverton. I'm a, I'm a voting person in Riverton. I've lived here since 1985. I do not consider myself first a Fremont County citizen, and then secondly, a Riverton citizen. It's the other way around. And so, when I heard that, it was, and I heard that so many times, that it gave me wonder to pause and think, what am I missing? What am I not hearing? And you were up at the front, and so, you know, healthcare is just important, that's all. You know, in 1987, my daughter had appendicitis. She wasn't shipped to Lander, they cut her here, they fixed her here, and discharged her here. She graduated a nurse in ninety-whatever, and now she has a doctoral degree in nursing. And, you know, it's just, I have too much information. And the mayor and I know too much on the inside, and so, I'm not saying any of that. All I'm saying is, we want good medical health. Thank you. I'm sorry, Tim.
Not at all. Thank you for the comments. Those are the kind of things that we will need.
Okay, so, okay, so would, would you like a, a vote of confidence from council in your assignment as the mediator on this, on this committee, or, you feel like you're out there all by your lonesome, or need some?
Your, Your Honor, I guess I did say, if anybody has any challenges to my serving in that capacity, I'd be happy to hear them. If not, I'm gonna do my best to help this process along, and that's my goal, is to try to do good things and, and to help facilitate that conversation.
Your Honor, I move that we add another load to Tony's back, in that he represents the City of Riverton with the medical profession and whomever he deems necessary to facilitate that. Is that your second, Tim?
I don't know under what context we would do that. It's a little bit difficult, but I support that, yeah. I guess that would function as a second, I suppose.
Okay. I, I, I think we're, I think we're okay. Tony's gonna be the, we don't know what this is gonna evolve into, what this is gonna turn out to be, but right now, he seemed to, in the last meeting, when we had members of different groups on either side of the table, he seemed to be the guy that was able to bring a calm presence to the room. So, so at any rate, they, they said, hey, why don't you be the mediator and maybe this will, maybe we can focus on the facts and, and talk about things that really matter. Okay? So, that's, that's what I'm hopeful that we can come out of this with, so. It's not that we're not doing anything, but a lot of what we've been doing has been kind of in closed doors, where we thought maybe we could work with Sage West on a more confidential basis, you know? They are a private company, really private, okay, today, don't have to disclose their business activities, they don't, there's a lot of stuff they don't have to talk about. And so, it's far different than the airport, for instance, where the city owns the airport. We do not own the hospital, you know, and there's no way that we could buy it, if we wanted to, you know? That'd take ten years of the city's budget, just to buy the physical plant, okay? And then the operation of it, I forget the number, but a couple hundred million dollars a year. So, that's really big business, and obviously, to us, you know, here in Riverton, that's a substantial amount of employment and, you know, business activity in our community. And to see that slide away from us, and, and an important partner with the CWC Nursing Program and all kinds of things, so we're, we're eager to, to see that the, that the facility continues to function and provide us with, with quality medical care and, and be a, a presence in our community. So, I guess that's maybe, oh, okay, so, on the 12th, Wednesday the 12th, is, is this meeting, I was gonna drag Tony to it, that's put on by FEMA, the state of Wyoming, and it deals with long-term loss of power. What would, what would we do in Wyoming to deal with long-term loss of power? So, it turns out that the state has asked that this first meeting be elected officials.
Sounds like mayor. You're it.
So, so the rest of you around the table here are, would qualify as elected officials, okay? If anybody has the chance to, to attend that, I have it mysteriously disappear from my calendar today, after Tony and I were working on it. So, I think it starts at 2:30, okay, and then is done at 4:30. And then there's gonna be a little break, and then there's the WAM meeting that follows starting at 5:30. It's gonna be at the Lander Community Center. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing anybody jumping in and saying they'll be there.
I don't have my Wednesday calendar in front of me. I would say, tentatively, I could do it, but...
Tentatively, you could do it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, okay. So if you can't, I'll just be there by my lonesome.
I'll be out of town, Speaker. I would be there.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, that's what we're trying to do, is pull this together. I don't know what FEMA have for us, but it appears to be a rather canned-up presentation, because they're going to present it to every one of the regional WAM regions, and so they're moving around in the next week doing these presentations, and, and then WAM is holding their region meeting, following it the same pattern across the state. So, they're trying to get all of the elected officials in the state of Wyoming and teach them about disaster management some way. I assume from that, that at some later date, all of this will trickle down to law enforcement and, you know, municipal and county staff. I don't think we have anything else to talk about. So, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So did I? This is dead?
Yes.